You're the new representative from the council then?
I'm the new fly on the wall.
All right, all right.
Well, good to do, good thing you said fly and not mosquito because I have to go like that.
That's right, that's right. Yeah, if we could, um, uh, beforehand or now or during or right at the beginning, just we could do a loop around just so that I could get to know you guys a little bit, that'd be great.
That does make sense. Michelle, you want to start it out?
I can start. I'm Michelle Bliss. I've lived in Maple Plain, I don't know, twenty, twenty or twenty-two years, I don't remember. A while, a long while. Um, a million years ago was, um, on the city council and, um, have been on the planning commission for a long time. Again, I don't remember. I'm not real good with, um, time or spaces of time, so, um, but, uh, live over on Helgren Road, which is County Road, County Road eighty-three. And, um, I had warned people, I have two little dogs that might, um, get themselves a little excited here. But I'm retired, um, about four years now. Um, but that's me.
I'm Stefan Scherson. Hi, John.
Stefan, go ahead.
Yeah, and hi Clarissa too. I haven't met Clarissa yet either, but, um, so I've been on a planning commission for how many years? Gosh.
At least.
Over ten.
Yeah, yeah, at least.
Yeah.
For sure.
Uh, moved to Maple Plain in oh-four and, um, I got recruited, yeah. And a couple of years after I moved in, I guess I got recruited, so it's probably been thirteen, fourteen years. Live on, uh, on Drake Street up in northeast part of, uh, Maple Plain. I am a landscape architect and work, uh, in the planning department of Three Rivers. You can see my shirt here, Three Rivers Park District.
Just by utilize the trails on a bike ride at lunch today.
Oh, good for you.
Yay, yay.
I, I need to get out there myself. It's a beautiful day. I've been having too many evening meetings this week, having a chance to get out. Maybe after this one, if it's, if it's short enough.
You can do that.
Mark's in favor.
Work on that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I can't vote.
I have, uh, married, have two kids, uh, in the house here. I've got a seventeen-year-old, uh, junior at Orno and then a sophomore at, uh, Normandale. My daughter who, uh,
Already.
Already, I know. Imagine that. So, um, yeah, so I guess I bring a little different perspective in terms of, you know, having some background in, in planning, uh, through Three Rivers and being a landscape architect. And so I get, I, I annoy everybody on the commission with my level of detail and.
And I love it, I love it.
Yeah.
He does not annoy. We all have, we all have our little thing.
Yeah, we all have our strengths, yes.
Yeah, that we annoy each other with, so.
So that's me.
And I'm Barb Rose. I've been in Maple Plain twenty-eight years. Um, I am married. Both my husband and I are retired now. We have three children, two are still alive. We have wonderful grandchildren and wonderful daughter-in-law and wonderful son-in-laws. And we're very fortunate to still be in Maple Plain. A couple of years ago, we thought we would move away. And, um, because of COVID, our children have said stay in Maple Plain. So we are staying in Maple Plain. Um, our address is on Prairie Land, one of the shortest streets in Maple Plain. And my house butts up to the old nursing home. So you will hear me ask many, 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 many questions about that because I'm interested as long as my neighbors that are on either side of me want to know what's going on with that, um, piece of property. And, um, let's see what else. That's pretty much it. I have no pets anymore, unfortunately, unless I can, but, um, that's it.
Mark, that's where that ten-story building's going in, isn't it?
Yeah, John, we weren't, we weren't supposed to say that right now.
Oh, I, there's, that was an inquiry. That's right, that's right, it has to go through you.
Right, yeah, first, yeah.
So I,
We're just considering that, uh, reuse, yeah.
It's nice to meet you guys. I'll, 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 I'll just, uh, let you know a little about myself because I, I don't know if any of you know who I, I am. I, I'm, uh, so I've been on city council for two years now. I've been in Maple Plain since twenty-twelve. Uh, moved out for a couple of year job transfer temporary and, and, uh, we're still here. I've got a sixteen-year-old, um, who is one of the goalies for the hockey team for, um, Orno, um, hockey. He was JV and he'll, he'll be on varsity this next year. And then I have a, a daughter who will be a freshman next year. And, uh, it's nice to meet you guys. Look forward to working with you.
Me too.
Or watching you work, I should say, and taking notes.
You are very welcome to, um, what's the word, opine? Put in, put in what you'd like to, and to ask questions, obviously. Clarissa, how about you?
How about me? Well, I have been, uh, here in Maple Plain for, uh, three months now, I think. And, uh, just trying to keep my head above water and learn as much as I can, as quick as I can, and still get things done. And it's been fun, good time. I love, I love working in small cities, so.
Do you know what it's like?
Uh, we actually, so I, uh, right now I'm in Sembrota, Minnesota. So my, uh, the family farm, um, my husband's family farm is down here. We don't farm, we're horrible farmers. Um, my son is a senior in high school right now, so hopefully we're sixty-seven percent sure he's gonna graduate. So, um, and then kind of see what happens. And then I also have an apartment in Minnetonka that I met during the week for work, so.
Good.
Yeah.
Um, well, I'm, since Mike, um, hasn't come on and, um, and we know that Mardell isn't going to be here. I guess we, we can start, um, start the meeting. And did I understand correctly that, um, one of the McGarry, that somebody else is at, is on with us, at least hearing?
Yes, yep, Bill is an attendee of the meeting.
Okay, all right. So I'll, um, open the commission meeting for May sixth. It's, um, six oh eight my time. And, um, and the first order of business is to adopt the agenda. If anybody has anything they'd like to add. I do have a couple of things, just more personal or, um, whatever before, um, or at the end of the meeting. Yes, Clarissa?
Um, I actually, so I don't think we actually got minutes out. I had a hard time finding the notes for these, so if we could actually just put those off until next month, I would appreciate it.
Okay. All right, so if, if, um, anybody wants to add anything to the agenda, otherwise I'll entertain a, a motion to, um, adopt the agenda.
I'll move to adopt the agenda.
I'll second it.
All those in favor? I.
Aye.
And Clarissa, what we, um, Frank had us do is we would raise our hands or, um, uh, so that he would see, you know, visually see that we were all in agreement or not kind of thing, so.
Perfect.
Then we have, yeah. Okay, then in terms of approval of the minutes, we will wait then till the next meeting. Yeah, yeah. All right, then with new business, we have the public hearing and, um, the business relates to, um, a request by, um, Bill and Jean McGary and Wham to consider, um, action on the property, um, just west of them across the street.
Head to the chair.
Sure.
Uh, Mike Milton, uh, has entered as an attendee, so I'm gonna promote him to a panelist.
Oh, sure, good. Thank you. Good, good to see him. Hey, Mike.
Hello.
Hello.
Sorry for being late.
That's all right. We're just getting into, um, the business. And, um, we'll have, um, some information from staff. I, Mark, on the, um, building and what McGary want, McGarry's want to do with the building cross. So, Mark, if you want to take it away, once you've done that, I'll open up, um, the public hearing and, um, and then we'll have, as usual, questions or comments to go with, with that. And, um, we'll go from there.
You're good. Thank you, Honorable Chair and Commissioners. Uh, great to see everybody. Uh, this item that's coming before you tonight is a request by Bill and Jean McGary for site plan review to allow the renovation and expansion of use of an existing commercial building on the property located at fifty-two fifteen Main Street East. So the property itself, it's located at the southwest corner or intersection of Main Street East and Bud Avenue. And the property is located within the city's mixed-use downtown zoning district. So mixed use, as you know, has three subzones and this subzone is the downtown, uh, subzone district. The property has an existing mixed-use commercial residential building on the property that has historically been used as commercial retail on the first floor and then as residential on the second floor. Uh, the commercial retail is also included some office, um, historically. The, the property itself, uh, like I said, is zoned mixed use downtown, but it's guided by the city's comprehensive plan just as mixed use. And the property is about point four acres in overall size. So the applicants approached the city last year about the possibility of, uh, utilizing a portion of this building and opening a retail, uh, market space that, that really plays a lot off of their business, but also is intended to fill, um, uh, void in the city when we lost our grocery store to try to bring some, uh, some local foods, um, fresh foods, primarily some packaged foods, uh, a lot of foods by local vendors, um, to the marketplace and in Maple Plain. And so, uh, we talked about what that entailed and, and because the market, uh, the McGarry's market is a retail, uh, business and it was going into a retail space and that is all permitted in the mixed-use downtown z- uh, zoning district. They, they were able to, to make those renovations just through building permits with the city and then doing some sign permitting, uh, through the city as well. But at the time we talked about that, they said, we'd like to get that up and running, but then ultimately talk to the city about expanding that use to include, uh, a commercial kitchen, um, in that space, which would help their McGarry's catering business. It's something, obviously with the pandemic, that became more, um, uh, it was brought to the forefront. But they, they've, they want to expand that and utilize some of the space here, noting that, you know, they've looked for a lot of years as to how to renovate the existing restaurant to increase the kitchen space and there just isn't enough room on that site, um, or within that building to really accommodate. So this presents an opportunity for them to, um, expand that use. And we talked about just the nature of the commercial kitchen itself doesn't probably trigger any additional, um, um, permission on our end. But then with that commercial kitchen, they also talked about wanting to hold cooking classes and then what we're kind of considering, small events or special dinners. And that is probably less defined in terms of exactly what that is. And, and they have some ideas on some things they want to try, um, uh, within that space. And so once we started to get into what we considered to be more of a dining experience and then a classroom kind of event-ish type, uh, situation, we said it really ought to go through site plan review and we ought to be able to vet it, look at parking, look at what other things may play into this and then try to put some definition, um, around those uses if it's something that, that we feel is appropriate and, and fits into, um, the, the intent and, and some of the uses permitted in the downtown. So, uh, so we, we had a lot of conversation about that. Chris and I actually went over, visited the space, um, and talked through, you know, a couple of the things that, that we wanted to try to just better understand. Ultimately, what we came to is the exterior of the building is really staying untouched. There would be no, no renovation to any of the building components on the exterior other than they're gonna, they're gonna add some mechanical equipment. But the site itself then was, was not proposed to be, um, to be, uh, updated or renovated. And so with that, and because of the nature of the space inside, they're really not reconfiguring or, or really heavily remodeling the interior space. They're really, they're really more so installing a lot more kind of equipment into the space and then using the space in, in a lot of ways, the way it's laid out now, but just with, you know, kind of a freshening up of that interior space. We, we started to, we, we walk a fine line between, you know, then requiring kind of a full, bring the entire site up to, uh, current standards and just trying to accommodate the use and then look at where is it that, that the site could be, um, brought into, uh, closer to compliance with applicable standards. In this particular case, really the concern that I had the most was if the use converts to something that has larger gatherings, um, coming into that space. I wanted to make sure there was, that, that we understood parking and the demand generated by that space. And then we could put some definition around the idea that this, that the city is not considering and/or allowing the conversion of this space into a full restaurant, bar, dining establishment. And I think that's an important distinction because, um, I think there's a lot of other factors we would want to consider if that actually was a per- a permanent conversion versus using this space in kind of a multitude of ways. So that gives a little context about some of the conversations we had. It also, I also just wanted to, um, emphasize that this is a, um, if you read throughout our entire ordinance and how this plays in, I thi- I think that this is a little bit of a gray area between, um, you know, thresholds that are crossed, which kick in certain requirements and, and the city just trying to make sure that we, um, can accommodate the proposed uses and then, then we can put some parameters around those uses. So I'm gonna share my screen if I can. Um, just so I can kind of walk through this, uh, interior space renovation, just talk through that a little bit, so. So the, um, the screen I hope everybody can see is an aerial photograph of the building. Uh, just for context, uh, it's a two-story building. There is parking associated with the retail office use of the space in the front of the building or on the north side. And then there's also a parking lot on the south side of the building. And this space, these spaces have typically been associated or utilized for the upstairs residential apartments on this site. There is, and just in context, on-street parking on Main Street and there's on-street parking on Bud Avenue. That is, is permitted parking. So the applicant provided us with a floor plan of the interior space that they intend to utilize and renovate. I wanted to just highlight the market space. This is generally the area in blue. And if anybody's been in there, um, has seen this, this space being utilized, they have, uh, refrigerators and, and freezer units, I guess, or cooling units on the, on the, um, north wall and the cash registers on the, on the, um, opposite side. And I, I think this is kind of their, their ultimate layout. And then there's this backspace that was, um, gonna accommodate the commercial kitchen equipment along with some equipment in this area and then more freezer cooling space in, in this middle area. And so the market space is something that, like I said, the city had allowed to go in as a part of the retail conversion of that's, or the retail use of that space, which it had been. What they presented to us is this idea that this space in total could be utilized for, a- as kind of mixed-use or flexible space, um, to the point where it would accommodate thirty-six, uh, potential seats for customers at these tables. And these would be utilized for those events or for those classes that we, that, that I had talked about. And so the conversion of this space from, you know, just a market retail space, which kind of has one demand, one parking requirement and has historically been the use of this building to a space that now can accommodate, uh, thirty-six seats essentially through the seating and, and obviously could accommodate some additional, um, on top of that. Um, but then the use of this space for, you know, that either, um, you know, things like a, uh, special dinner, like a wine dinner was something that the applicant had described to me or these cooking classes, um, are things that are events or, or special events in their congregations um, that kind of are above and beyond what normal typical retail space would accommodate. So they provided this floor plan that just shows how this space could be utilized in, in a special event or, um, a special dinner setting or a class setting for like the cooking classes, um, which kind of gives us then something to look at as it relates to site plan review. So with site plan review on this, what we looked at was if this space was being utilized for that special event or those cooking classes or for the special dinner, it would, it would operate or from a parking standpoint, be more typical of a restaurant in terms of parking demand. Um, we don't have in our ordinance kind of a in-between use or a special use. So I looked at, I looked at the parking demand on a restaurant, which typically is pretty, um, conservative in terms of the number of spaces, but what that requires is one space per four seats, but not less than fifteen spaces. So in this particular case, if you were to have thirty-six seats that could be, um, uh, pulled out into that space, you would have a demand of, of nine, uh, parking spaces. But again, our ordinance says fifteen as a minimum, which is, I think, probably more in line with and typical of an event that would hold up to thirty people or right around that thirty-person mark. In comparison, the retail office parking for this building, if it was just retail space, even like grocery or general office retail is one space per two-hundred-and-fifty square feet. The market space itself is, that area in blue again is about twelve-hundred-and-fifty square feet. So that requires about po- five parking spaces. I also included in that retail parking, um, uh, analysis, the adjacent space. So there's another office, uh, space or, or retail office space that is to the west of the market space. That's that second set of doors on the building. And that recently got leased by a chiropractor. I anticipate their opening soon. Actually, uh, we approved their sign permit. So I, I did that analysis. It's about fourteen-hundred square feet, about six spaces required. So a total of eleven spaces for the retail operation in this building. Um, but if you were to take into account the fifteen, uh, um, parking spaces associated with the event, special dining, uh, there would need to be, um, there would need to be the sixteen spaces or the fifteen spaces plus the adjacent, six spaces for the adjacent office. So we would then have to come up with, um, something in the neighborhood of a little over twenty spaces. The applicant did provide us with a diagram of the parking. One of the things we talked to the applicant about is parking lots in, in okay condition, but there's some, there's a big hole right at the one entrance off of Bud and then there's some, you know, it's, it's seen, uh, some cracks and things like that. And then the other thing is there's no striped spaces. None of the spaces are currently designated. So they put together this layout and they also provide us with an estimate to upgrade the entire parking lot, both north and south sides. And the building owner, um, again, McGarry's is just leasing this space, has committed to, uh, doing this by two minutes overlay and then restriping of the parking lot, um, which would then provide the sixteen parking spaces, including one of those being a handicap parking space. So, um, when you look at then, you know, if we were to do the sixteen parking spaces that are onsite and say we have a demand for fifteen parking spaces, uh, for an event and then six for a, for the chiropractor, we get up to just over twenty-one spaces. We would, we would have a, you know, deficit in this parking lot then of five parking spaces, um, that we think are likely, um, uh, fully accommodated with on-street parking in the event that the chiropractor is completely full and the event's happening at the same time. And it's highly unlikely that those two things, um, overlap. I would say though that chiropractors typically have night or evening hours, so I don't think it's unusual that we'd have a couple of spaces being utilized by that practice. Um, but then, you know, we'd also have the availability of on-street parking, uh, to make up some of those extra spaces. And the other thing to think about too on this site, um, I noted it, the, uh, the, the site generally accommodates parking on the rear side, um, or the south side for the residential uses. But once that parking area behind is overlaid, there's quite a bit of parking beyond just the residential units in this parking lot. And I think a lot of the, um, employees historically for these retail spaces have utilized this back parking lot, uh, for parking. So that analysis we looked at, um, we just tried to understand what the demand would be if the use intensified on this site, what that does to parking and then what other things should we look at? Um, I noted that the, um, there is an existing dumpster that's currently located, um, on this, on the, uh, south side of the building. It's not enclosed. I noted that, uh, it's something we could ask for, um, to be enclosed or it's something we could talk to the, the property owner about enclosing, if that's something we felt needed to be updated. If you look at the parking lot itself, there really isn't space to do a whole lot else other than park in this area. We've got a sidewalk and the parking really just runs right up against the back of that sidewalk. So without, you know, Main Street being totally reconstructed and some change happening where we could get streetscape and a larger sidewalk and some of those things, I don't know that we could, um, obtain any of that with this particular, um, building or this, this particular project, but that's something that, uh, you could certainly talk about. So, um, I also noted the applicant did apply for and we've issued signed permits for temporary and permanent signage for the marketplace. There wouldn't be additional signage for the uses we're talking about there. The, the signage that he's, um, been issued is for the marketplace. So, uh, outside of that, um, I put the criteria in there as it relates to site plan, um, review. Ultimately, um, we just want to ensure compliance and to the extent possible compliance, I guess, and then the effects on the overall area and surrounding properties as it relates to the proposer. In, in this case, what we're calling kind of an intensification of the use. We haven't received any comments back that I'm aware of, although maybe Clarissa knows there's something else. Um, and then I put some criteria and conditions, um, and findings in the report, should the planning commission want to, um, recommend this to the city council. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks.
Mark, I had a quick question. Obviously, we're looking at a mixed-use project that people living upstairs. We're gonna have a kitchen that's gonna be upgraded to whatever degree and it'll be an active kitchen. And then we're also looking at events, however often that will be, I guess, is to be determined. But, and I know nothing about the building. Where are we at with fire protection? And is that something that we should be considering or have any concern about?
So it, it is, but it really falls under building, um, building permitting. And I do not know the status of the permitting and maybe, maybe Bill does. But, but it would have to meet applicable building codes for the use and the, and the, um, equipment that's being proposed. That includes ventilation as well. So from a, from a planning standpoint, I think it's, um, it's probably outside of my purview, but I think it's definitely something that we would confirm. But of course, all of these renovations are gonna be permitted, so.
Right. So that's something, if it's, uh, if that's a concern, that would be something that would be addressed at a later time with the fire marshal through the.
Well, it would be, it would be addressed during the building permit approval process. And like I said, maybe, um, Bill would have insight as to where they are in that process.
I guess what comes to mind, we're just kind of upgrading the use, which is great. I mean, that'd be great, the McGarry family and then in Maple Plain. Sounds like a great project. I just get concerned sometimes when we have a mixed use in an older building.
Yeah, I'm, I.
Be very expensive to, to fix for the owners if it does go down that path.
And I kind of.
And I kind of following along with with Mike. I I agree. I think it's it's a good idea to use all of the the buildings that we have. And in particular, when you've got a good plan like this, it there seem to be, I mean, the you're right about the this kind of fitting in, you know, the marketplace fitting into mixed use. When I looked at, you know, the permitted uses in the different sections or in the different mixed-use areas, one of the things that the the mixed use in downtown didn't allow for grocery stores. Now, I know that this is not a full-blown grocery store, but and maybe I'm saying it more in the sense of your comment, Mark, that, you know, since we lost our, you know, since MPS went went away, there are, you know, the mixed-use downtown area, a lot of this kind of fits into it. I I found myself a little bit uneasy thinking of the uses and working, you know, putting the equipment in. And we're not we're we're not putting conditions on it or we're not. And I don't know that we need to. I don't know why, and that's one of my questions too. Why have we other times done conditional use permits and not this time? I I do appreciate that they're not foreseeing that there's going to be, you know, like a lot of wine parties or a lot of whatever. But even even in personal lives, you know, the more that the word gets out, then it becomes something where business would improve and which I'm assuming that they they would want. And and when I look at, you know, like, is there something where you're looking at using the, you know, building, like putting in the new equipment into into that building and using it as kind of like, I think, a ghost kitchen or ghost whatever? Is there difficulties created by saying, okay, McGarry's? And they have all the permits and all the things that they need to do to do their catering business, to do everything. But it's also being done parts of it in another building. Are there issues that get created with with? I mean, I know it's just across the street, but I kind of I I kept coming back to I and I can't really put my fingers on why it kind of makes me uneasy.
Yeah, I I could, I mean, what I'd offer, you know, I looked at all the uses in the downtown in, you know, the various districts, and then I tried to capture what is this? And yeah, we have this gen- general provision or similar uses, you know, type of thing. But so I looked at in the uses, you know, coffee shops, cigar bars, wine bars, similar gathering places. Well, that's one thing, right? So then I'm like, well, that that kind of has a little bit. I looked at delicatessen. Well, a delicatessen is kind of like this a little bit, right? Candy, ice cream, popcorn, nuts, frozen dessert, soft drink shop. And then, you know, bakery. So then I'm like, okay, well, all of those are kind of a really similar to the things we're talking about. So that's how we got to the market, being just kind of a retail market. And, you know, the intent in my read, and I I think you guys would agree, grocery was not permitted in the in the MU downtown because we didn't want a big box grocery store, right? So it's really more so we didn't, we don't have room for, and we don't want a big box grocery in the downtown side. And I think that was really the intent to why I was excluded. But I think that the, you know, the use that we're talking, oh, the other one was Meat Market. That's permitted, right? So this kind of idea that you can sell goods. And so I I feel like that's there, you know, and then with that cigar bar, wine bar, that provision, you know, it does kind of lend itself to, you know, some of what we're talking about with the kind of special dinner events, you know, at a cigar bar, at a wine bar. It's you might have a night where you have a meal brought in or you might have a, you know, something to pair with your wine or the cigar bar might have an event where they bring in, you know, people to do a tasting or a I I don't know. I don't know if you call it that. I don't smoke cigars, but I know they do special events, you know. So with that, I I just think that this kind of has a lot of those same feels. What what I always look at is the intensification. And so like if a building's been used for office and now it wants to go to retail, I want to look at that because I want to understand, does it, you know, there's differences in those uses. Similarly, and most importantly, a lot of times in our in our small towns like Maple Plain and, you know, I do Watertown and some of those. If a retail space or an office space is going to convert to a to a restaurant or bar space, it's a totally different use. And so that's where I wanted to make sure that that conversion wasn't being permitted outright because I think you'd want to then more fully consider that. And so this felt like in-between to me, and that's why we're doing it as site plan. They're really, I think it's a permitted use. I think it's just they're changing the use of this building to a point where we want to just review it, vet it. And then if we agree to that change, we want to put some parameters around what it is we're allowing to change just to kind of keep a record of that. And then always, I think you have the 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 purview to to look at these applications and then say, boy, there's something deficient about the site, and because you're changing this use, we think you should do X or Y. It gets a little bit more gray. We have some very specific provisions when we're adding space or renovating certain amounts of a space or valuation. I don't believe we're crossing those thresholds, so I think then we're talking about more limited ability, so.
Yeah. Okay, then is it something that? And and I agree with all of that. And like I said at the beginning, I like this idea. But if we're also looking at, when would something become too much? Or where it would come back to us in terms of the other uses? You know, if if there were people like cooking classes and people like, you know, wine, but, you know, dinners, those kinds of things, when does something become too much or is there a limit? As long as.
And I I want to echo that question too. I I guess the term I was floating in my mind was use creep. So, you know, some sort of thing as scope creep, right? You start out and it just sort of evolves and goes and and grows. Well, if if we are allowing cooking, a commercial kitchen, and yeah, starts out being very occasional, but it takes off and all of a sudden now you're cooking all the time and it really, really evolves into becoming a restaurant, then that's a different animal. So that's that's kind of, I think, what we're getting at here is what? How can we define that and and what what would be the trigger to suddenly say, okay, now we need to take a look at this again?
Yeah, I I mean, you 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 have hit exactly hit on exactly what my concern was with the use. And that's what I and and the applicant and I had these conversations. So, you know, for for me, and I I added this condition, and of course, it's just my language in condition number five. I wanted to stress that the use is occasional, but I didn't want to get to the point where we started limiting or putting parameters around the use such so much that it became one not in not something we could administer or realistically administer. And then two, that it started to it started to put too many limitations on Bill and Jean's creativity and their desire to, you know, be successful as a business. So I wanted to I wanted to respect their business and their and their desire to, you know, try to make something work. And they 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 don't know exactly what this looks like in its entirety yet, but they want some flexibility. So for me, when I thought about this and and I talked to Clarissa too, this was one of my concerns is how do we frame this? But I said the occasional use. So and I think that a word occasional, and then I further further down in that paragraph say, and then the permanent, right? So to me, the distinction is between occasional and permanent. There's not a metric. There's not a black and white line. But I think we'll know when that creep happens, right? And that's what I wanted to define was I wanted to say specifically that the space cannot be used for permanent restaurant, dining center, bar or other similar use without review and approval of the city council and can only be used or is limited to the occasional use. And so I do think that in in planning, I know it's probably a little bit of a term of art, but I think that occasional and permanent are clear. And I think everybody's going to know if, you know, this space becomes, you know, what what's, I mean, McGarry's Pub is going to turn into Saint McGarry's, you know, bar and grill or something. I mean, I I think we're going to know. And so that I think that occasional and permanent is the distinction, and I think it's going to be, you know, up to the city to administer that, but I think that's that's my place. And I was trying to be careful in how do you craft that? So if you have other suggestions or recommendations on that, I'm I'm happy to listen to them because it's a it is a fine line.
Yeah, and I and I don't obviously have, you know, a fine line. And and maybe that's part of my discomfort is because so many things that we deal with most of the time have, you know, here's a very clear, this is what you're doing or you can't do. I mean, it's clearer, more more clear. And and I'm okay with occasional versus permanent. And I do appreciate, you know, looking and experimenting with something, hoping that it, you know, just takes off. And and so I guess that if something looked like it was going to become something where you very where McGarry is very clearly that we really need to have that whole building, that's their cue. And then to us, it would be a cue that, okay, we have to think about how this is going. You answered the question that Mike had about, you know, the fire things, about making sure, you know, you talked about the ventilation and the things up on the roof and or side, you know, that it's fenced and or screened, screen's the right word, that kind of thing. I'm okay with that. And so it's all of this is taking place inside the building. It's not, I know with with COVID and all the craziness that 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 has entailed. I know that there's the outside seating, the inside seating, that kind of thing. And I took this because it didn't say outside seating, that the only outside seating will be at McGarry's at that location. We're not going to have that kind of issue across the street. Is that correct?
That's my, yeah. That's correct.
Is there?
Yeah, and he's working on that outdoor space at McGarry's to try to enhance that, so.
Okay, okay.
So rather than trying to define at which point occasional becomes permanent, could we maybe define some sort of consequential issues that would trigger a review? I mean, if there's so many of these events that parking is become, you know, becomes a bigger issue. One thing about parking, I guess, is that I I know there's limited parking for McGarry's Restaurant across the street, and a lot of the on-street parking is used by McGarry's customers there. So, you know, there may not be that many available for this operation. But I I'm just wondering if we could, if we want to consider, I'm not sure how quite how to word it. Maybe you guys can help me out with this. But, you know, if if the ma- the amount of use of it being a, you know, an event-driven or restaurant-related uses, if that be becomes a detriment or an issue with parking, that the city would have the, you know, authority or ability to to do an additional review of the of the plan? Does that make sense at all? Is that is that too?
Yeah, I, well. I'm totally tracking on that. It makes that makes a ton of sense to me. Parking, so so the consequential issues of it being used for events and special dining that would trigger further review. And 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 we would say something like that. It's not limited to these, but examples of consequential issues of it of this of this building being used for special events or dining, special dining that would trigger review. It and then we'd list them. So parking, that would be one, and we could define that. Are there any others that you could think of like, because I think that's great, to be honest? That's that's and I don't know that, I don't know that I would get rid of the occasional and permanent. I would add to it with this provision, so I would add this as kind of a sub condition that helps to define this. I think that makes sense.
Yeah, it would be a very visible type of thing. I mean, because you're right, we have on-street parking where Old City Hall used to be, you know, in my head, I mean, it's like a great big field. Not not that I'm advocating this or saying, you know, have everybody go park over there. But, you know, if if it turns out that people are doing it, are there, is there a what's the word? Is it occupancy, like, like how many, how many people can be in a building? I mean, I know you said that, you know, parties of like thirty-five. And, you know, if my family came and they said, well, we'd like to have a place, thirty-five isn't going to cut it for my family. So then you'd have, you know, something other than that, that's an okay thing because the occupancy of the building allows that?
Yeah, I tried to, I was thinking about occupancy and whether or not there's a limiting factor on occupancy or or the size of the event, right? You could say fifty or less, sixty or less, twenty or less, thirty-five or less. You know, the tables and the occupancy with the tables set up, there's there's some sort of a building occupancy. I could determine, you know, what that is. We could also ask Bill if he, I mean, when I talked to him, he was saying, you know, something in that like thirty-person range is what they're targeting. So we could put a cap on events shall be limited to no more than X without, you know, additional consideration. I I wanted to, I wanted to define some of these things, but I also didn't want to throttle his
No, and and I
business capabilities.
Right, and I appreciate that, but I think if we're trying to think of when, you know, when will McGarry's know, when would the city know, that kind of thing? You know, if you're looking at the space, sometimes the space just dictates it. And also, I know that I know today or by the end of May that a lot of the restrictions are going to be removed for COVID. But it is also still for a little while that having, you know, like X number of people in a small space is probably still not a good idea, especially if you don't know who they are. That's just me. But I don't, I don't want somebody standing there, you know, with what house clicker is going. Okay, we've got the, you know, thirty-five or forty, you know, that's it. You guys stay out. I don't want to do that either. So maybe sticking with parking.
I think sticking with parking makes a lot of sense. You know, there McGarry's puts quite a bit of stress stress on the parking, just the business that they've got. You know, and then to compound it, I would think that they'd have to be very careful not to pack so many people in there that nobody's going to go to McGarry's anymore because you can't get in there.
Yeah, and and I think if you put a McGarry's sign on this market, if it says McGarry's Market or something to that effect, people are going to go, that's McGarry's parking. I can park there too and go over to the restaurant. So these are people overflowing into that parking lot that are going to the restaurant instead.
Once the parking spots are filled, that's your capacity.
Yeah.
Besides parking, the other consequence might be, you know, the livability of the apartments above, I guess, too. I mean, retail is obviously typically is done by five o'clock or six o'clock or whatever. But if they're having evening events, there might be some impacts to the residents above. But I'm not sure we can really how much we can regulate that.
Yeah, well, and and the way I looked at that is if you're, I looked at it like two ways, like if I was thinking I was going to live. You know, we've talked about having business on on ground level and then residential above it. Certainly, when someone is coming in, if they're going to rent, they're going to not buy in this case. But if they're renting, you kind of know going in, okay, in this building. You kind of know going in, okay, in this building is X and it could possibly have, you know, um. You know, a lot of commotion, there would be cars, all that kind of thing. I think you kind of know what you're getting into, I would think, unless you're real dense, that um. You know, and some people like that, because there's something going on all the time. So that that one didn't bother me, and it's also one of those things, that's not McGarry's responsibility.
Yeah, there really really only be an issue with the people that are there now during that that, you know, that living there now and then. Uh, experiencing the change. Once the change has happened, then anyone moving in is gonna realize, no, that's the, that's what I'm moving into.
Yeah, that's true.
Biggest issue they have with the mixed use is the empty bottles hitting the dumpster at eleven o'clock at night.
Yeah.
And and it's different, because the smells and they're gonna have, you know, they'll close up at ten o'clock and that'll be different for these people, or one o'clock, whenever they close.
Yeah.
That's gonna be different, so, but that's really on that landlord to notify the people, they may lose a lease.
Yeah, make make that.
Yeah.
Mike, you bringing up the um. The empties or the going in, um, I know that currently, and you had had put that, I know currently there isn't a fence or whatever. Around there um, bin, the trash bin type of thing. As long as there is something going on where there is the. It's it, there is work going on and happening. Can we ask um, the the owner of the building to put some type of fencing around that? I I think it's an opportunity that we should use. I mean, we have with other businesses when they, you know, renovated or done something more. And it would, it would help the appearance of of things and kind of keeps things a little less tacky.
You're gonna have a lot more food scrap, you'll have all sorts of things going into those dumpsters. So I think it is, would be completely appropriate to. And important to probably enclose that.
Yes.
Yeah, I'll, okay, I'll I'll show you the.
That has to be. Can we make that number seven? I know it's on the back end.
Yeah, so that's the. That's the space, right? Um. That I was talking about, so could you, could you do something along this back line? I I think you could, I think I think it's worthwhile if the planning commission is. Um, or believes in that or agrees with that, that we would just condition that um, on our recommendation. Council always has the ability to take or accept or not to do those, so, yeah.
Right, so that could be a number seven?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, okay, um. I like I liked the idea of working on making the. The surface better too. And um. Okay, otherwise.
Mark, could you flip to the uh, site plan?
Yep.
So I I have a question or concern about. Uh, the westerly stalls here, uh, one through four or five. Um, so according to the submittal, that whole width from building. To sidewalk is forty-two feet. Um, those are twenty-foot stalls, that leaves twenty-two feet for a drive lane. Um, which is fine for, you know, probably six through thirteen. Um, but uh, that really narrows up, I'm not sure what that dimension is between between the backside of stalls one through four. And that uh, extension of the building.
Yeah, I have this, I have the same concern, um. Yeah, I looked at it as it's, well, one, there's an overhang. So I you pick up a little bit because you do have um, potential overhang, let me just pull that dimension real quick.
Is that why the parking long, long time ago, when it was striped, they were at at a diagonal instead of straight on?
That would make sense. I don't know, but that would make sense, it would be easier to pull in.
It would, it would.
But you would lose spaces if you went back to that.
Probably, you'd lose probably two or three spaces. You would, but the other issue is that you could, um, I don't believe, I mean, I think the property to the west is. Is a private driveway, so I I don't think you can really ask people to um, to exit that way.
Right, so this isn't, this isn't an access of the building, right?
So if you hold into stalls number one, two or three, you know, you're gonna have to back out the same way you came in, you can't.
I've got, I've got thirty-eight feet, thirty-seven and a and a half feet there. So I was thinking, you know, eighteen feet with the overhang, if, I mean, most of those unfortunately are gonna overhang a little bit. And then you got about a twenty-foot drive aisle, which is for ninety-degree, you're getting tight. But I just looked at it as it's historic, that's how it's been used, I don't know. I do think that it was diagonal, I don't know that it was functional, but.
Well, let's leave it as as it is.
I could look at it a little closer in the field, I guess, to see.
The other thing is that you mentioned overhang, you really shouldn't have overhang on that sidewalk, the sidewalk is only probably four or five feet wide. You don't want to have, you know, bumpers sticking out halfway into that, and you you still want to maintain a sidewalk. Uh, in fact, you probably should put, you know, wheel stops along there, so it prevents people from parking on the sidewalk. But then there was a whole drive lane thing, so it's 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 too tight. I mean, it's certainly not, doesn't meet our parking lot uh, guidelines.
Right. And again, that's where I was looking, do you really have any room to change that? But um, here I can share the.
There's on-street parking available, isn't there? I mean, there's on-street parking available, do we need fifteen stalls on-site?
In order to meet the parking guidelines for either restaurant.
Needs to be on, those need to be on the site, okay.
Yeah.
Well, and so, yeah, having having on-street, you can see here a car, you know, pulled in, it's it's a little bit to the side of this bump out.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm gonna go around the, I'll go around the corner here. Oh, look, it snowed.
Oh, my goodness.
I don't want to see the snow, I'm I'm.
Yeah, I don't either.
Well, and I'm I'm going to ask a silly question, and I'll admit that um. I was probably doing something illegal, I wanted to turn around and go back home one day, and I was parked over by the old city hall. Anyway, when you said that right here on the right, that isn't, that isn't an access into that building?
Uh, I think it's been used, I guess, I don't, I I don't know if there's any easement, I guess I'd probably have to do a little more looking. I think historically, it's always been used, you, there's a sign here, and I mean, this is the line, the seam in the concrete or the pavement, asphaltum. Uh, is that, so.
Well, and I I did it. I I think that considering um. That this is i- in a way kind of experimental, or let's see what's going on. I'm not uncomfortable with saying, let's see, um, let's see what happens. Um, let's um, see how full that lot gets. Um, how many complaints do we get about gray-haired ladies going on somebody's driveway because I did it? Um, to get through there or um. Let's see how the use is, because that that gets into that, that's one of those signs that would kind of.
I I think if we approved the site plan, where city essentially would be saying. It's okay to go that way. It's, there's nothing preventing it, um, and it's looks like an obvious way to go, right? I mean, I don't know who who owns that property there, or if they should be contacted about this, but. It's one thing to kind of live with an existing condition, but if we're having a plan that says, here's how we want you to improve the parking lot. Then we're sort of sanctioning the use in the way that it's designed, which is.
Is it something the owner could do to to see if there's some way that they can? I don't want to say fence, but somehow indicate that this is clearly not an entrance or.
Yeah, I mean, let me, let me work, let me work on that issue. I I'll have to do a little digging to see what that easement, I mean, there. There clearly is enough room here to drive um, a car, it's really this curb cut that's not permitting it.
Yeah, can you get rid of that little bit of curve?
Well, I mean, I think you could, um, you know, one thing, and and I keep this in my back of my mind is. I'm hopeful that we can get a project off the ground someday on the downtown, and when we do, that street's gonna be reconstructed, including the sidewalk, the curb, everything. On both north and south, so at that point, we'd have an opportunity to fix this, but.
Well, and and the owner, the owner of the building, um. I know that that's all tarred or asphalted, whatever y'all want to call it. But there are a lot of places that, you know, there there can be signs that say um, private entry. And um, that that would stop me, I know it won't stop everybody, but it it could be something that even if it was. You know, um, sitting somewhere along there. That would maybe stop a lot of people using um, the residence's driveway, if it said private entry, that that's. You know, not, that's not for commercial use then.
Yeah, and I don't know that the parking in and of its, I mean, I'm looking at the plan, and I think your comments, right, Steph, and that that gets super tight. I just, I I don't know, though, that we're, I mean. I don't know that we're uh, condoning a condition that doesn't exist by allowing them to stripe it, because I think the striping was there in some format previously that went through.
Yeah, it has.
The other thing, his striping is shown in line with the building, which is back over here somewhere. Um, you know, in this area, which means if you came and pulled into this spot, you could conceivably back up on his property and go back to the to the east, if that makes sense. You know, because I don't think he's, he he didn't draw the line way over here. He drew it in line with the building, so. But let me, let me look at that issue a little bit closer, I think I can note the the discussion, and then the recommendation is that we don't promote. Cars driving off property. And um, if that means that we have to sign that in some manner, or we have to just work with the adjacent landowner, let me. I can, I can fix that, or at least address that issue prior to council consideration on that.
Yeah, that'd be great, and it does look like you're looking at the image here, that what's shown on the plan is probably that sidewalk. So I mean, I guess there's, the building's actually set back a few more feet than what's shown on the plan.
Right.
Which does give you a little more room. Um, but yeah, I just want to be respectful of the neighboring property there, it looks like they have a two-minute driveway, and uh. You know, I'm sure they wouldn't appreciate it if there's fifteen cars in there every night, uh, have.
No. Yeah. On the driveway. Because it wouldn't be fair for them to have to have hot cars parked there too. I think that's, that's good. Are there any other comments or questions?
Question, since this is, since this is coming to us tonight. Were those people that live in that gray house, were they notified that this segment was happening tonight?
Yes, so everyone within three hundred and fifty feet of the property received a notification of tonight's meeting, so.
So they're they're didn't, they didn't come forward, so they must think it's okay.
Yeah, and it was.
Or they don't know what's going on.
Yeah, it was.
Uh, no, because we describe what's going on.
Okay, and it was also in the in the paper.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think that house might be for sale, unless it's the one next to them on the right, but I I drove by the other day, and there was a for-sale sign out in front of one of those. Um, and and then just uh, that parking lot actually um, that we're discussing right now is actually paved today. Um, they were out there working on it when I drove by this afternoon.
Oh, okay.
So um, I, the only thing, the only concern that I that I have, that I see is, um, I I I love the idea, I came from a restaurant background. So to have a, to have a um, you know, a a kitchen where you can have your catering operation, we call it going out the back door. You know, just having a catering kitchen is an awesome addition to any restaurant, because it doesn't, it doesn't mess up your flow.
Yeah.
Um, my my concern is, and Mark, my question to you is, who ma- who? So this is the planning commission, so we're just saying, look, this is what you can do with the space, but who actually regulates the restaurant piece of it? Because my concern is, is St. Patty's Day, and all of a sudden, we have servers over across the street. Um, and even if the food's coming from McGarry's, it's, you know, they could literally set that up as a as an extra. Location, I know it's only one day and it's occasional, but that would. There's a, there's a big difference in what the inside of that space would need to look like to pass restaurant compliance compared to probably what we're talking about for occasional use for wine dinners or. Um, you know, so that that was, that's one of my questions.
Um, yeah, that's a great question. I don't know that I have an answer. I do think um, we do have Bill um, or Bill and Jean on the phone, on the call tonight, we could, we could ask him that question, because I think he'd have good insight as to how he's intending. Um, yeah, I mean, we, I mean, you could conceivably, I I guess, think of a condition that states that it can't be used for. Kind of crossover, crossover dining or expanded dining of the McGarry's Pub. I mean, I I, it's gotta be on its own. Um, it it, I don't know, I mean, it gets gray, I think your your example probably is a good one to think about, because that could happen, right? On on St. Patrick's Day, this becomes thirty-six additional seats. Um, I don't know, is that a bad thing for one day a year, or is it an okay thing, I guess, is? Um, if it's one day a year, my 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 assumption is it's just fine, but.
Yeah, to me, I think it's fine. Um, I, like I said, the the regulating authorities in the restaurant business, I don't know who that is. They may not think.
Well, the Department of Health, right, the Department of Health would be the one who, yeah.
Yeah.
But I mean, I know that. Yeah.
But I was, I was under, I was under the understanding that they were thinking that they could use this as. A ghost kitchen, and to me, that means that they were thinking at certain times of the year, they might need this additional kitchen. To help balance out what they need at the restaurant. Am I wrong in thinking that?
Yeah, the the kitchen for sure, and the kitchen, I don't think we have a problem with the kitchen. Um, so that them cooking or preparing and running it over to the restaurant, I think that as long as that meets health code and everything, that's fine. Um, I think it was that if they were doing the reverse, they were seating people over in this space as kind of an expansion of their dining room. Um, at the restaurant, and I don't think that was the intent. And um, it's not my understanding that that's the intent, and you know, if a special event that did happen, I think that. I think that's fine, because we're putting in place this provision that it can't be permanent. So, you know, what is permanent, I think if it was every Friday and Saturday, uh, you know.
And I think we have a big issue.
Bill opens it up as a, as an expansion of the dining room, that's a problem, that's 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 permanent.
Mm-hmm.
If it's St. Patrick's Day, um, you know, twenty-twenty-two, and then twenty-twenty-three, and then twenty-twenty-four, I I think that's different, but.
If it's every Friday, Saturday night, that's still occasional, it's two days out of the week.
Yeah, and that's where you get into the discretion, right? So so kind of permanent use, that to me starts to become permanent if it's every Friday and Saturday.
For the whole year. Because that goes, that goes definitely beyond occasional.
And and this is where uh, some, this, yeah, this becomes subjective, right? And I mean, but a lot of uses in the city are subjective in the sense that of how we administer, when we administer. You know, what what is, and and we try to not make it that way, we try to make it as clean and clear as possible, this is a little bit gray. Um, but that's that that permanent use and and occasional use is what. Yeah, and you're right, Steph, and so maybe maybe there's another bullet point that says if parking becomes an issue. Um, we can say that expansion of McGarry's dining into this space um, on regular nights.
About the cooking lessons, though. I want to sign up for those.
Um, two, two things, um, Barb, um, why don't you just make, um, tell them uh, Margel's comments about this whole thing. Um, and then we'll hold the rest of it for after we're all done with the business, and then I'll do the um.
Okay, so to this afternoon, I spoke to Margel because I wasn't sure if she was. If she had a computer or not, I was thinking not, because the previous meetings that we had before she met at City Hall. And since she and I are almost neighbors, and my husband and I are, have had our shots, I'm pretty darn sure Margel does has too. Um, and I'm sort of know what I'm doing on Zoom, I'm here tonight, so it shows I know a little bit. Um, but I'm not tech savvy, but I wanted to in invite her to come to my home tonight, so she could see all you guys and hear. Everything that was being said, so I called her up today, and she didn't even know that this was happening today. Um, she says she has. Um, she says she hasn't heard anything for a while. Um, I did invite her over, but she has been having some health issues. And she even told me she had to go to the new Haven Homes after she got out of the hospital to um. Be there for a while before she's gone back home. She is back home now. She said that she would be loved to come to my house next month if we have a meeting that if we had to do by Zoom, that she would come. But she's still under the weather right now. Um, so that's why she's not with us tonight. Spirit wise, she is. And in spirit wise, she did, I did share with her. Because she did not get the, the minutes or the bulletin or anything like that. Um, I did share with her what McGarry's wanting to do. And for many of you people, if you haven't been here for a long, long time. She used to rent the space where the marketplace is. It was called Butterflies and Berries. And it was a craft store, which I regularly went there. And um, so she is well aware of what this space exists. And she wishes well for the McGarry's to hopefully to go on with this project and make our town a better place. And that's what she wanted me to share with you folks tonight.
Please.
Thanks.
Please.
Okay, um, what I'll do is I'll open the um, public hearing at seven twelve. And as I understand it, there haven't been any comments. Um, we don't have anyone on, on with us and we haven't had any um, emails or notes or anything like that. So there's no comments from the public. And I'll close the public hearing then at uh, seven twelve. Um, if anybody has any other questions or things they want to talk about. Um, otherwise, we should entertain what we would like to recommend to the council.
I think you should um, at the public hearing, if we open it, I'm sure Bill would like to speak, so.
Oh, please do. He could, yes, please do. Have him, have him speak.
Or Jean, I guess. Bill or Jean, whoever's on, maybe both.
All right, I've just promoted, uh, promoted them to panelists. Bill, did you want to make a comment?
And if so, just unmute Bill or Jean. There you go.
There we go. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, yeah.
Welcome, welcome, welcome.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Um, Jean is here with me also. Uh, just want to say thank you for uh, obviously very uh, robust discussion. We appreciate all the effort you're putting into considering what we're looking for. Um.
Did we lose you?
Production, if you will, for the, for the um, in kitchen. Uh, so we can do things like catering. We can find, you know, through COVID, we learned that there was a huge opportunity for us to sell uh, things that we create at the restaurant, whether it's our, our dressings or meatloaves or whatever. Um, and so uh, the ability to produce that product and sell it through the market and sell it uh, through catered events and those kinds of things is really the driving force behind that. Um, if we do events, and we've done some events at the restaurant, they're always small and intimate. If we needed to do a larger event, that would be a catering event at a different venue, not at the, uh, not at the market. So we have opportunity to move those kinds of events to specific sites that can handle larger capacity. So we, we would consider those kinds of things. So uh, we appreciate the discussion and, and uh, think that this would be a good addition to Maple Plain. And I think we get really good response in the market so far, so we appreciate the support there.
Good.
Well, one other comment I would say, you're talking about the permitting and that. We work a lot with the Department of Health as a restaurant, obviously they oversee all of our uh, you know, uh, qualifications as a restaurant and all of our certification for meeting health codes and all of those kinds of things. They have to approve the design and all of the uh, the use of the equipment, which does include uh, fire suppression for all of the cooking equipment and the hoods and, and all of those things. So that will be required to be a part of putting in the commercial kitchen is uh, ancil equipment and stuff for fire suppression and, and those kind of things.
Good, okay. That answers that question. Good. Thank you. If anything else that you want to let us know, or did you have questions from us or of us?
I'm sorry, can you still hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Um, so I just wanted to, did a comment on that. And, and they were involved with the, the review for opening up the market also. So they, they came out, inspected the market before we could open, making sure that it followed all the Department of Health's uh, codes and all of that too. So we weren't permitted to open that, just that portion of it without their approval also.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you.
Please.
Good. Well, then, um, it's seven sixteen and we can close the public hearing. What did, um, with the points or the recommendations, um. Mark, you said that you would work into it, you know, um, under the occasional versus um, permanent that you would put in, you know, some words like, here's an example of what we're thinking of in terms of parking that would give somebody some idea. And then if we were looking at um, like a number seven, um, and I. I know that this doesn't, I mean, the dumpster situation doesn't have really anything to do with McGarry's. It has more to do with the owner of the property. Can we still add it? Well, maybe, I don't know. How does that work?
Yeah, I think we made the recommendation out of, as a recommended condition. And we'll work on that between now and city council with uh, Bill and Jean and then the owner to see what we can do, so.
Okay. So if we were looking at your recommendations from page six. Um, that it meets all the conditions, um, complete. Any, or look at any of the comments, which is what you just referred to. And that it's going to be um, regraded and, and that kind of thing, which it sounds like it was done today.
Today.
Um, issue, um, number three kind of stood, um, four. Sounds like it's kind of a given for a restaurant type things. Um, and then the five will be where you'll be wording, um, putting some extra words in there having to do with occasional versus permanent. Um. And then, I don't know, seven or six or seven, they go either way, applicant paying and, and then the dumpster situation.
Yeah, that's exactly right. So we'd have, we would, we would have, if there was a recommendation, we would have an expanded five. That would um, indicate example trigger points for city review that would be considered consequential. Um, um, events or uh, what did I say? Uh, yeah, uh, consequential issues. So I would say under five, we'd have a sub, sub letter A. And it would say, uh, the following examples would be considered consequential issues of this space being used for events or special dining. That would trigger additional city review, parking, and I'll expand on that. And then expansion or use of the space for um, uh, McGarry's pub, uh, dining.
Okay.
And so I'll define those two. And I'll work with the city attorney to, to wordsmith these a little bit, like I usually do before it gets into a resolution for council consideration. And then the um, then number, number seven, which is really, it's going to be number six. It's going to be that they add, that the uh, the owner of the property enclose.
Yeah.
The uh, two dumpsters that are located on the south side of the property. And, and I'll, I'll work on that language a little bit just to be um, in compliance with applicable city standards for dumpster enclosures. And then number seven will just be the cost that the applicant shall pay out costs.
Okay.
I'm surprised that they didn't have a dumpster enclosure, enclosure thing on it before this. Cause I would think most of.
We didn't, we didn't used to do it and the, for something that's in existence, we've, it's kind of been upgraded as we've dealt with stuff. And nobody's, we've never done anything with that building.
Okay.
And now that, you know, now that it's food related, there's probably going to be more ways too, rather than, rather than a retail use.
And my guess is it's also used by the residents upstairs.
Oh, I'm sure it is. I'm sure it is.
It'd be a little.
I think about the end of the parking lot into the private property, is that just something that, Mark, you were going to uh, explore further with the neighbor and, and applicant?
Yeah, I mean, I have that note, so that would be in my notes as part of the discussion would be to look at and understand the neighboring property access, so.
Okay. All right, then as those stand, we need a motion to recommend approval to the city council.
I won't be shy. I'll make that motion.
I was waiting for you to go.
I will second that motion.
Okay, good. All those in favor, say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
So here we all are. Okay, it looks like aye. And um, well, good, then Mark, you and, and the McGarry's kind of know, like, when they need to bring this to the city council and so on, that kind of stuff?
It will go to the city council meeting on the twenty-sixth, I'm sorry, the twenty-fourth of May.
Thanks, Clarissa.
I have one other, I have one other comment to make. It, it doesn't need to be part of the motion or anything like that, but I, as long as we have Bill here listening to you. I guess the landscape architect in me recommends that uh, we take the area around the sign and uh, remove the asphalt around it and maybe get something growing in that space. The entire site is impervious, right? It's just solid asphalt.
Well, there's that one little, one little island, but you know, that's funny, Stefan, because you know, I am also landscape architect. And so um, you and I think like that. Um, one of the things that we've looked at with Bill and trying to get the sign to comply is um, looking at uh, ways to enhance that sign. And so Bill had um, he had proposed to us a planter. Uh, be installed at the base of that sign. And we thought that was a good solution, kind of an intermediate idea. So that, you know, I mean, long term, I'd go back to when the city redoes Main Street East for the downtown. We're going to add the, the streetscape. We're going to do the sidewalk and do the trees and grates. We're going to do all of that. So um, so yeah, uh, I think you're right on I um, with what we were thinking. So I think that's a, I think Bill's already intended to do that. I'll share you, I'll, I'll show you what he shared with. Clarissa and I, I know, Bill, I'm not holding you to this one exactly, but.
I like it.
Something.
I like it.
So something that could start to soften that sign area.
Yeah, no, it's pretty. Yeah, something green, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'll be good. Good.
We intend to put evergreen type plants in it also for the winter, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, good. Well, thank you on that. Okay.
Nice.
Thank you. Then um, commission report and other business. Um, just a, a couple of things from, from my end. And, and um, one of the things came because of, of what Barb had talked about. Um, Clarissa, um, most of us have access to a computer. Um, and um, some of us to printers. Um, but Mardell is someone that, for example, um, we have to make sure that she's notified. Or, you know, like um, that she, that she knows we're not having a meeting or that she knows we are having a meeting. Um, I think it's a safe thing to bet that somebody has to get a packet to her. Um, for sure, Barb and I have both expressed interest in having a packet. Um, in terms of in particular, if there's a lot of things that need to be printed. But Mardell, um, who has been a huge um, part of Maple Plain and um, the goings on and what goes on here. She needs to be um, kept in the loop. And um, so that she knows that her, that, that we still want her to be doing this and.
Can you clarify? So I thought I had an email address for her, so she just doesn't, she doesn't get email?
No.
I don't think so, honey. I don't think so. I, I don't.
Good to know. Good to know.
Yeah, and, and I think that it's probably still out there, especially if it's like Grandma Glitter or Glitter Grandma or something like that.
It's, it's Grandma something or other, but this, what I have is from so many years ago.
But the thing is, she was, in the last few years, she has been having to go to like the library in order to see the stuff and to do it. So just kind of know that um, she's one that's going to definitely have to get it um, delivered or mailed or however it goes.
And I, I'm very happy as long as you guys print it out, I'll come and pick up my packet and deliver her packet at the same time. I have mentioned that before, so.
And then I just want to make sure also, because um, we don't want to break any open, open meeting laws. Um, but taking into consideration Mardell's um, age and um, her um, ability to get around. I want it to be okay that she can go to Barb's, which is just down the block from Barb's house. Um, to, to do the meeting, so she wouldn't have to, you know, figure out how to get in the car and go all the way to City Hall. Because that's actually where, like Barb said, where she's done it the last few times. So she's not trying to break any rules. We're just trying to be considerate of age and circumstances.
Certainly, and that, that's just fine. There's no rule against, against that. And certainly, we're more flexible when, during the pandemic too, so.
Yeah.
Hopefully, we can be meeting in person here sometime in the near future.
Yeah, that would be nice. And then I think I know that Barb has had questions and, and the others as well. But um, Barb mentioned um, the old Haven Homes um, spot. Um, what, what's happening in the city? Um, is, have they made any decisions? We know that the property is for sale. Um, but hi, is there, you know, like a future meeting that we're going to have for new use or?
Our future tenant?
Yeah. Can anybody say anything about it or it's all a secret?
I heard Mark knows.
No, I, I don't, you know, I've had a lot of calls on that property. I don't, Clarissa, I don't know if you have as well, but um. There's a couple of groups that are kicking tires on it. You know, the big question on that property is what can they do on it? What, what is permitted? And what we've looked at and we kind of keep looking at is trying to understand and define the fact that there is not a conditional use permit for that property. Which means that we consider the use of that facility to be legal non-conforming. So legal non-conforming has some ability to continue to be used as long as it's not expanded or changed. Um, and so the use of that building is really uh, uh, assisted living for seniors and some um, uh, independent living for seniors. So that's what we're saying is the existing legal non-conforming use of that building. So any change in that would need some other process. If you look at our, that are, so, so that's, that's what it is. That's its classification today. It is Zoned R1.
Yeah.
So it is Zoned, Single Family Residential. In the Single Family Residential, there are some, some uses, they're not very well defined, to be honest with you. Like um, the use of a um, of a, oh, what's the, it's a, it's a, it's an old term. Uh, I'll tell you in a second, but um, so I would say to you that almost any use that is not assisted or independent senior is going to need to come through the city. And what then you start talking about, and I've told people this, is it's not like we say that senior living, assisted living, congregate living, other types of living are, are conditional uses. We don't list those as conditional uses. And because we don't list those, you would then have to not only um, ask for some sort of permit, permission. But it would actually be that you'd have to ask the city to amend the permitted or conditional uses in a zoning district. And the city really has carte blanche kind of ability to regulate land use. So I would say the city's in a good position as it relates to that. Um, because you don't already have listed some of these uses as conditional. Um, the, the uses that are permitted are single. single family dwellings, group homes, playgrounds and parks, essential services, which would be like some sort of utility and then agriculture. Um, other than the raising and keeping of livestock. So those are permitted and then, um, you also have in the conditional uses churches and schools and the like, um, planned unit developments, residential.
Mike, you're on mute. Mike, you're on mute. There. Did you have a comment?
I was yelling at my son. So, full disclosure, but the dog got into some of his dinner, which was chicken wings, which then I'm saying, get the dog out of the house just in case anyway. My wife was in Naples. She's down in Florida with my daughter and so I'm in charge.
The guys are at home.
They're trying to marshal the kittens. So.
Anyway.
Mark, Mark, you're saying is that for people who ask in the neighborhood, um, which Barb and I are both in the neighborhood and Mike as well, so.
And Mardell.
And Mardell is that all of those things could be done, but right now the only thing that would mean everything except for two things means they have to visit us and city council. And those two things are if somebody's going to do assisted living or independent living, right?
Each senior.
Being senior, yes. Are.
That's important.
Important, yes. Is, is the land on the south side of the building, is that also a part of the whole thing? Do you happen to know? There's a big.
Yeah, I mean, it is. Yeah, it is. Um, it, it's a tricky deal. These, these facilities, you know, I dealt with one in Watertown, same, Elam owned it. Um, historically it was a nursing home actually though, so it was actually, you know, of, of a kind of full care facility also. I mean, it was similar but different, but they did have an independent side also. Um, you know, that one, that one, uh, had a conditional use permit though, and then got a new conditional use permit and it's, it's for assisted living, but the age range is much broader than senior. Um, it's for people that have, um, you know, all needs. So they, they need some sort of assistance to live. Um, we, the, the types of users that are out there, they're, I mean, you can imagine there's a, there is a huge demand in our country right now for mental health, for treatment, for certain types of treatments, um, and for broader care for all age groups that have underlying issues, whatever those may be. They might be a combination of issues. Um, so I mean, just in all transparency, that's what we get calls on. I mean, but that's who's out there looking for this type of a building, right? I mean, it's kind of a niche uh, use and it's a very limited scope. If somebody was going to try to buy it and reuse it in its current condition. So. But we'll see, we'll see where they go. I think the process is, you know, is what we just talked about and, and we've got some teeth in that. But if somebody wanted to come in and say, I'm going to be, I'm going to be Haven Homes and I want to do senior assisted care and independent living, that would be potentially they could do that.
Okay, okay. Anything else happening?
Is the town big enough for two places like that?
Not, not identical. So that's where you're getting some of these other specialty uses or you're getting some of these facilities that are a little bit different than that, right? I mean, Elam and Cassia now, I mean, they're very, they're very much in that, um, continuum of care model where they're, they're targeting seniors, right? So they have independent, you come in and then you go to assisted when you need that and it's kind of all a cart and then, and then you go to memory care, right? And it's the, I call it the concentric circle, but that's the, that's the model. It's a continuum of care model. So that, that's very traditional in senior housing. What, what I'm talking about with some of these other users are maybe not, they're not the same continuum of care model. I think you're right, Barb, in that there's probably not a, I, I don't know, but I don't know that the demand for two in the same town is right there. That, that would be identical, right? But you could also, you could also see where one shiny new building and one, you know, nice, but a little bit older building might have different price points. And then maybe you are serving the same end user, just different demographic.
I'm thinking that building is quite old. So I'm sure, I know that they have a new air conditioner system that went up two years ago or a year ago. And there were some other things that they did up on the roof. So I know there's updated mechanical stuff, but, uh, the building inside looks pretty darn old. So I would think they would have to be work updates.
The problem is in the value, right? I mean, that building has a ton of value because it has a ton of square footage and, and then, and if you think about it as a, it, as a building, it's got a, a significant value as land. I mean, it's three residential lots. They don't, that doesn't add up to the same dollar amount that they're putting on it, right? I mean, you're talking about what, what's a residential lot, um, in that neighborhood and independence? I mean, in, uh, Maple Plain and I, I don't even know the last, you know, one that we sold a vacant lot, but I mean, maybe a hundred and thirty, forty, fifty thousand for a vacant lot? I mean, maybe.
Yeah.
Think, so I mean, I think there's your, there's your delta, right? A million plus and, or a hundred and fifty or, uh, four hundred.
Yeah.
Plus demo cost. Yeah.
Yeah, big demo cost. I have another question. Um, if somebody asked me about the quick, um, trip or the the gas, the other gas station, is that happening or not happening?
I haven't heard anything in a while. Clarissa, you? No. I, I think it's still on the table. I think the landowner and the QuickTrip folks are, they were at a disagreement on pricing. So they might get back together on that. I, you know, QuickTrip's so busy.
Yeah, I think it's still on the table. If anything, it won't be for two years. I developed, I just got done developing the one in, um, Delano.
Okay.
And the Caribou Coffee, they were just wonderful people to work with. And, um, but yeah, I know they're interested here, but that did get tabled because of that. They just couldn't come to terms with it.
So Bill and Mel.
It'd be next year.
Property too.
Pardon me?
Oh.
Yeah, Bill and Mel owns that property. That's, that's who you were negotiating with.
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll probably be locked.
No, I, I think, I think that one's realistic, to be honest.
But I don't know. I was surprised that we got Haven Homes, to be quite honest.
I know the residents of Maple Plain are looking forward to a quick trip if that could happen.
Yeah. Yeah. Does anybody have?
My husband is.
Any other questions or, or comments or?
Well, I'll, I'll motion adjournment.
Okay.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Good to see everybody. Thank you.
It's good seeing all of you.
I'm gonna go see if.
Everyone, great to meet you.
You go see if everything's still in one piece.
See if you can fight the dog for the remaining chicken wings.
Thanks for being easy on me.
Good luck.
You're welcome, John.
Goodbye, everyone.